All right, good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, September 6, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. I'm going to call this regularly scheduled select board meeting to order. The first thing on our agenda is some interviews for the Town Historic Preservation Commission. Is Nancy?
Nancy's here.
Nancy here?
She's in the background.
Oh, perfect. Do you want to come on up? Do you want to just tell us a little about yourself and your interest in the Historic Preservation Commission?
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm not used to these. I have been on the Design Review Board for some years. I found that that was a very different thing than what this historic preservation is. That the Design Review is really all about change. You know, nothing comes out before it except something that wants to be changed. My familiarity with my, in my professional life, has always been documenting the past and history. Though I have no real experience in American architecture, archaeology. I do have experience in archaeology, and I think that the methods for documenting things are the same. It really doesn't matter whether you, you know, what century you're working with. And I've always been interested in architecture, but I think that this, this is a more familiar ground for me than the Design Review. And I can think of all sorts of reasons for, you know, sort of having this, what do you call it, CLG, right? To move forward, I think it's a terrific idea. And I think a lot of it is what's being done already by the History Center. But this would bring more state money in.
Okay.
And I can see all sorts of ways of promoting the historic architecture of the town within the town.
And you have the time in your schedule to make for the meetings and however they're scheduled?
I do, I do. I'm old.
All right. Does Carrie, either of you two have any questions?
Nope, you asked my standard question.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Charlie?
Good morning, Joe.
Morning.
Susan, Ray.
Good morning.
So if you just want to tell us a little about yourself and your interest in the Historic Preservation Commission?
Sure, I'm Charlie Daganer. I'm presently the town clerk in Woodstock. I also service the president of the Woodstock History Center. But more relevant, I guess, to this application, I have a master's degree from UVM in Historic Preservation, and I previously worked for the Vermont Division for Historic Preservation in Montpelier, administering a couple grant programs they had, and also doing review for the division for a few months while that person was on leave.
All right. So Susan, I'll let you ask your.
My standard question. Do you have any issue attending meetings, whether they're day or night?
Depending on the night, I may have a conflict. Days, I usually have coverage in the office and am fairly flexible. But as I said, depending on when the meeting is scheduled for, I should be able to make it. And day or night, I should be able to make work.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
And that leaves Sarah Glasser Tucker.
She's on, too.
All right.
Hello.
Hi. Hello. Do you think to just tell us a little about yourself and your interest in the commission?
Certainly, yes. So I am an interior designer and interested very much in architecture and historic preservation. I moved to Woodstock two and a half years ago, and the historic nature of the town was one of the main attractions for me. And I'm just interested in actually doing some work to actually, to maintain that and to help the cause in any way. I do not have a background in historic preservation per se, but I do have an interest and a passion in it. And I'm really interested in learning more about it. And so just kind of coming in with an openness and a willingness to work toward helping the town preserve its character.
Thank you.
My standard question is whether you have any problems with meetings, whether they be day or night?
Not in general. I mean, as long as I have a little bit of, you know, advance warning to make sure I can, you know, I have two kids, so make sure my husband can stay home with the kids, or, you know, a day or two to take off work, I can certainly arrange for any time.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
So that takes care of those and brings us to Citizens' Comments. Is there anyone in the audience here on Zoom? John Spector?
Thanks, Joe. I think that I made it, well, not I think, I know, but I made a mistake and did not get to Nikki some material that the EDC wanted the Select Board to consider. I sent, I sent the material late in the day on Friday, possibly after you guys were closed. The issue is to approve an extension of funding for the marketing program. It's a $45,000 funding, and as I am bringing it up now in Citizen Comments, even though I sent it and asked if it could be added to the agenda, I feel like it's a significant item. And unless everyone on the Select Board has received the material that I sent by some miracle, I would actually just simply request that we add it to the agenda for the next Select Board meeting, and we'll deal with the consequences of the delay. There may not be any consequences, I hope not.
We received it, Nikki has it now, so she can distribute it. Is that correct? Yeah, so we'll distribute it and put it on the agenda for the next meeting on the 20th or whatever it is.
Yep. Okay, thank you very much. Sorry about that. And sorry, Nikki, I, the reason for it, I could make up a reason, but the reason is I completely forgot. So thank you, and I'll see you at the next meeting.
All right. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Hi, Roger.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
So I have a significant concern about the way this municipal manager search has been communicated to the public. I'm sure unintentionally, there has been, to my, in my opinion, a lack of transparency and a failure to keep the public informed regarding the, regarding the process that's been decided upon. There's no meaningful information in the public record on the town website about how decisions were made, or even that decisions were made. Nothing in the posted agenda or minutes of meetings about decisions taken by the combined boards regarding how to conduct this process is reflected in the minutes of the meeting. Decisions to go into executive session were not properly documented in the minutes. When you go into executive session, you're supposed to explicitly state why you're going into executive session and what the justification is. There's no public record of the decision to hire the executive search consultant. The meetings for the July 29 joint meeting between the Select Board and the trustees are missing from the website. In the case of critical concerns like hiring a municipal manager, and in every case, the public has a right to expect that public records of meetings posted on the website are accurate and complete records of the conduct of government business and of decisions made by the board. As of now, that is demonstrably not the case, and in more cases than this one. This process is something that the people of the, of the town and village of Woodstock should have had significant input on how this process is going to work. This is somebody who's going to have a huge impact on the operations of the town and on our taxes. And the way that this, decisions have been made about this, and this, decisions have been communicated about this, have been completely inadequate. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll take that under advisement. I'm just making some notes. Anyone else have any, any other comments? All right. Brings us to additions to and deletions from posted agenda. Does anyone have any? Okay.
I just have a question.
Okay.
We received the agreement from David Green. Is that, where is that being?
I think we want to talk about that on the 20th, because he, I was just talking to Tom, and I guess he's in vacation, so he's not even here to.
Great, thank you. Put that away.
So Tom, Management Report.
The first item on the Manager's Report is the schedule of the budget process. I'm not so sure I even shared this with the Select Board previously. And it's just as well, because as we've been going forward, we've been making changes to it. And I don't think we're going to see changes at this point. As far as I know, the Finance Committee has agreed to this, and, and this will be the process that we'll be using. And when the boards, I'm sorry, when the Finance Committee is meeting with the department heads, which is going to start on the 15th of September, pretty much go on a weekly basis. There's a couple, I think, October 13th and 18th, there's two meetings during that week. Those are open to the public, because we're not sure how many Finance Committee members are going to be there, so they could show up in a quorum or not. So, and of course, the Select Board is welcome to those meetings as well. If three of you, well, let me know if you're going to attend, because in the same situation, if three of you happen to show up at that meeting, we need to warn it.
It'd just be easier to warn them all.
We could.
That way they're, that way they have nothing slips through the cracks.
Yeah.
Is this just with the department heads?
But I, I really, I'm kind of reluctant to do that, to warn it as a Select Board meeting.
No, but warn it as a Finance Committee meeting.
Oh, we're definitely going to do that. I meant Select Board.
Are these for with the department heads?
Yes.
I think at that stage, I would sit out and let them work and bring, bring us something. But I wouldn't want to stop one of the other board members from going, if they wanted.
Okay, so chances are, from what you were saying, that's, a quorum's not going to show up, the Select Board quorum's not going to show up at those meetings.
That doesn't sound like it at this time.
Yeah. Well, if anybody decides they want to come.
Yep.
I was at the last one, so I may.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I may, too.
Okay. Well, somebody behind you two wants to show up, please let me know, because we should post it. Otherwise, three people probably shouldn't sit throughout the meeting.
Okay.
I'm not going to go into the details. The Board has that information, and it will be in the minutes. And we could post this on the website also.
I think that'd be good.
Yep. Tax bills were mailed out on September 1. You may have already received those, but I just wanted to mention that. Staff did a great job of getting them printed and prepared and gone, well in advance of statutory requirement date. We are going to begin interviews tomorrow for Public Works Director, I should say interview. We did have two candidates, one's already backed out. Put together a committee of the Chair of the Select Board and the Chair of the Trustees, as well as the former Public Works Director's going to participate in the interviews. Even if we have a really great candidate tomorrow, I, and the people on the committee may feel differently, but I think that we're going to re-advertise a little bit, because the, I don't know, the response was not overwhelming, and I think to do our due diligence, we need to do that. In the interim, we have a plan of myself and different members of the Public Works Department that will be covering, the Public Works Directors in his absence. And I think that it's going to be time-consuming for me, unfortunately. A lot of what he had to do was site visits. I hope to avoid that, but I don't think I can in all cases, because we need somebody out there that has the authority to deal with situations and cases, in many cases. Item four on the report is the cash flow covered bridge. Not a big item, but I thought I would just report it was damaged. It's already been repaired, nothing structural, and an insurance claim was filed against the RV owner's insurance that that hit. And beginning today, the Managers' Department office will be closed between noon and 1:00. And that will be the case from now on out.
Isn't that something that should go before the two boards?
I don't think so. I think it's.
I respectfully disagree.
Okay, well, we can disagree, because I think that's totally under the Manager's purview to have his personnel work when he fills appropriately, or she fills appropriately, and, and have the office open during whatever hours are appropriate. We've recently studied that the amount of visits, even on any time, is very, very miniscule to that office, and even, and I'm talking like six to eight people a week, and even less so during that one hour, noon to 1:00 p.m. We've put a box outside the office for people that may want to drop in documents or tax payments, which we will check after the office is opened again at 1:00 p.m. That's all I have. Oh, yes, and so we put together a financial report, and then she handed it out.
You know, that's, it's really not okay to be getting that right as the meeting starts. I mean, we can't have a meaningful discussion.
I agree.
We need it in advance.
All right, well, let's.
So I would like this to be updated and resubmitted for our next meeting.
Okay.
And I do have one question, though, as I quickly looked over it. I thought we discussed not having Sarah Macy renew her contract for this fiscal year, because we don't have the funds.
Oh, I, I, that's a new one on me. I did not know that.
I don't think it's in the budget.
I agree, it's not.
So how can we spend money we don't have in a budget?
Well, we just have to overspend one item.
I thought we discussed that Sarah Macy was really critical to helping us move forward in a productive way.
I think we discussed it in, in conjunction with the Budget Committee, but not ongoing assistance to the office. And we just, we can't keep bleeding that money.
Can I say something?
Who was that? Oh, Zoe. Yeah, please.
Thank you. So there was an agreement entered on April 1st of 2022 between the town and Sarah that was signed off on, and I believe, actually, I have it here, it's signed off between Ted Bradley, Brady, excuse me, from the VLCT and Bill Kirbin. And Bill signed that on April 4.
And when does that extend to, or like, what's the end date on that?
Sure. It expires December 31st, 2022. Yeah.
So there's no future agreement after that? We just need to pay for July 1st, 12/31 out of FY23? It's already budgeted?
Yep. And so it looks like you're probably closer to $10,000 versus the 14. 14,150 was the total.
And some of that's from FY22?
No, 14, yeah, I'm sorry, 14,150, about $3,200 was FY22.
Two, okay.
I would request that it be brought before the boards, before that any contract like that is extended?
Yes. Yeah, if there's any interest in extending this, or you need to extend it, or review, I think, would be, is requested. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Thank you, everyone. So that takes care of Management Report. So for old business, acceptance of new road and land transfer from Loop Road, which is right there, South Woodstock. If you want, come on up. You can move the papers around whenever, give you the space.
Got it.
And if you'd just introduce yourself for the.
Yep, this is Greg McKenna, you're at Burry Masterson. Can I get your names real quick?
Yeah, I'm Joe Swanson.
Joe. Ray Bourgeois.
Susan Ford.
And then on the, so there's Carrie Colebottom, right? She's on.
Tyler Reynolds is here, too.
Hi, Tyler. All right, so you want to start us off?
Yeah, so I think it was February 2020, we got approval from the Select Board to relocate Loop Road. It's like a 1,500 linear foot section. The work has been completed now, and we're basically at the stage where we want to do a land swap with the town and Fern Rock LLC. We have it drafted up with a surveyor, Bob Farnsworth, and attorney Peter Ballers is involved as well.
Did you say Bob Farnsworth?
Bob Farnsworth, yep. And these are his plans you're looking at.
Okay.
And then Peter Ballers, this attorney involved. Basically coming to the Select Board to see if there's any additional information needed from you guys, or that you need from us in order to make this happen.
Is anyone from the town?
Yeah, Elijah, and I haven't met with him personally, but he was there with the contractor, and they had talked about a few changes that were implemented during the construction. And I guess I've been told that he is perhaps no longer working at the town?
Right.
That's correct, yeah. But Elijah and I were out there Friday and looked over this. He had, during the construction process, two minor changes were made on either end, where the approach.
Yes.
On the, boy, I think that's, I'm a little confused on the directions here.
Probably the north and south ends, where they tie into the, almost existing road.
Well, yeah, but I think it was the, I think it was the south road, or south approach. The radius of the curve was reduced a little bit, and an embankment was excavated so that the line of sight was improved. And on the northern end, I'm sorry, the southern end, a bank was cut back more to improve the sight distance because of the curves.
Yep.
But other than, and those things are done, and Elijah and I both agree that the thing is built as to this plan, and, and to accept the road is certainly acceptable at this point.
Okay.
So you'll have legal documents at some point from the attorney for us to.
Yes.
Being done as a boundary adjustment, or?
We have them ready. It's just, it's just a right, it's just a right-of-way relocation, just between the two parcels. So whoever, should I send that to Nicole?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, hold on. Thank you.
And just for my clarification, I'm looking at the map. So this is obviously what always was the road.
Yep, here's the house, yep.
And then where, which is the, which set of lines is the new road?
Up here.
That one?
Blue.
Okay, that's what I thought I was looking at.
Yep.
I was trying to visualize, I appreciate that.
Yep.
That was the only question I had. Carrie, no other questions?
No.
All right, so we want to see the documents first and then vote on it at the next meeting?
I think we'd probably have to vote to authorize someone to sign them, so we can't do that.
Without looking at the documents?
Right.
So if you can get us the documents, we'll keep this on the agenda for the 20th?
Okay.
We've got enough on the agenda for the 20th to keep us here until 10 o'clock already, so let's push something out. Yeah, but.
Quick.
Okay.
All right.
It won't take long.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it'll take long. We'll, if you can get us those documents.
Yep.
And if we have any questions, we'll get back to you, but.
Okay.
We'll come up with a motion and.
That sounds good.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Already sent to Nicole.
All right, great. And we got truck bids, first one being for Highway Department, three-quarter ton, four-wheel drive. That's Claremont Ford, was it?
Yeah, they're both.
Ford of Claremont, yes.
Yeah, both vehicles are Ford of Claremont.
Nobody else bid on it? We never, we didn't request anyone to bid on it?
No other manufacturers, no other garages bid on it. I, I, Friday reached out to the Spella to see if he could give us a little more information about, Ford does offer municipal or and/or fleet pricing, and I wanted to know whether that is what we're looking at here or not. And it's hard to compare this bid to a, a standard truck, because it's not, this is strictly cab and chassis. So.
So they're selling us the truck and, and the Iroquois body, right? Is that like?
Yep. Yep.
But the 47 is the bid for just the truck and the chassis, right?
Yes.
Yep.
So why is one body $7,000 more than the other? And do we need a super cab, I guess, would be my other question. That's a four-person vehicle?
Yep.
Are you talking about B, the first one or the second one?
One's a 250 and one's a 330. I have no idea what that means.
It's the payload and tow capacity is increased.
So that'd be the difference.
Yeah, one ton is cheaper than the three-quarter, even though it's a, I guess my question is, why do we need a crew cab?
I think they find it really much more efficient to, when they're doing jobs that require more people, as, you know, like four people, three people, as opposed to driving two trucks.
I have seen them doing that at storm sites and different projects, so.
I've also seen three or four trucks there, too, so.
Yeah. I guess it goes, works both ways, but it doesn't, doesn't seem unnecessary to me, because I have seen it done, I suppose, is what I'm saying. I mean, if this is what we got.
Well, you're going to look into the municipal.
Yeah, to make sure that we're getting a discount.
For the, for the state bid?
You could, for both of them.
Yeah.
If you want to make a motion contingent upon that, you could.
Contingent about not exceeding the state, state bid?
Well, I'm not so sure it's a state bid. I think it's a Ford fleet discount.
Because a state bid's probably not that specific.
Yeah, it's probably not. Now, I don't know that they get a lot of trucks of this sort.
Yeah.
State, very few.
No, but if they have some kind of deal with Ford, that they get.
Yeah, they probably do. I, I don't know for a fact, because their trucks could be quite different.
Mm-hmm.
So I wouldn't really call it a state bid, I'd call it the Ford fleet pricing.
Fleet pricing?
Yeah.
Municipal, okay. Carrie, do you have a question? I thought I saw a hand up.
Nope.
So then, contingent on the. So then contingent on the what, the, the three-quarter ton super cab, this bid not exceeding the Ford fleet pricing, I would be in favor of this, accepting this? Is there a motion for, can I get a motion for that or something similar?
I'll move we accept that.
Okay. With the contingency?
With the contingency, we check what state pricing, state pricing may impact it.
So motion by Susan to accept the three-quarter super, three-quarter ton super cab, contingent on not exceeding the Ford fleet or state bid type pricing. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Second by Carrie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, four with one absent, that motion. And then next vehicle being the one-ton cab with chassis, and also from Ford of Claremont.
I'll move we accept the bid subject to state pricing.
Okay, motion by Susan contingent that this is, does not exceed the Ford fleet or state pricing?
Second. Second.
Second by Ray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Four in favor with one absent. And brings us to gravel bids.
Can I just ask, on the second page of the one ton, there's something about plows. So is this above, or are the trucks coming with a plow? Says body and plow.
Yes, it does come with a plow.
Okay.
All right, so gravel bids, Pike, Casella, and Twin State. Was there a recommendation from Elijah on these?
Yes, and I can present that to you. It's pretty straightforward, as you can see on the gravel bids. Pike is a low bidder on all those.
Right.
And and obviously that's his and mine recommendation to accept the gravel bids for all four different types of gravel from Pike. There is a representative from Pike here this morning.
Hi, sir.
If there's any questions.
Any questions?
I, I don't have any questions.
I don't either.
I think we should act on the recommendation of the manager and superintendent.
I'll make a motion to accept the gravel bid from Pike.
Second.
Motion by Ray, second by Susan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries with four with one absent, four in favor, one absent. And sand bids.
Sand bids are a little more complicated. Don't know exactly why they bid the way that they were. Because as you can see, Twin State is really the only vendor that has provided a bid for all three items. And what's not obvious when you look at the spreadsheet is that they, they actually combine all three items for our winter sand. This is for winter sand primarily used when there's ice storms. So really, there's no other option than to go with Twin State, which is really the current vendor anyways for our sand, because the other, the other vendors are not bidding for all three components of the winter sand. Ironically, I think Twin State gets their sand out of the D and D pit, which is their, which is a local pit, they have an arrangement with them, and then, and then they mix their other components in to, to create a final product that has all three components.
Since we have-
Does that make any sense?
I'm just wondering, since we have someone from Pike here, if we can ask why they didn't give a bid for dry-screened sand?
Hi, my name is Jeff Alder. What's your regard? I wasn't aware that you had a bid on all three. So in the past, there are three totally different products. Dry-screened sand is a natural, like a bankon product that's screened, so it's like the brown sand that you see. The other two items you asked for pricing on, the manufactured sand, is actually created through crushing ledge, and then we wash it, so it's, it's not dusty at all, it's a washed small product, that's a manufactured sand. And then three-eighths ledge is a separate product that a lot of the towns, including you guys, usually blend with your natural sand, give it bite, it's a fractured face product. Whereas a natural sand or a dry-screened sand is not a fractured face, it's a, little particles that are all around. So the reason I didn't bid on the dry-screened sand is because our pricing to haul that from Parkland, it's worth more to Pike Industries to use it for hot mix than to sell it from winter sand. Because the, the supply is as it is. They're not making sand bits anymore or anything, so I just assumed that you could bid on three individual products. I know, I don't know what you guys did last year for a warning, if you did all three of them on company or if you sort it out.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe just shame on me for not asking, but maybe going forward you could put something like that that says this will only be considered all three products. Bid on? It kind of, it kind of seemed like it was three.
But you wouldn't have been able to, you wouldn't have bid on the dry-screened sand?
Well, I probably, I probably would have, because then you'd have to look at a breakdown. You know, as a town, how much of each of these products did we use? And what's the distribution and volume of each one? And like, if we used, three-quarters of our budget was for the three-eighths ledge, and Pike was six bucks a ton cheap, you know, lower than the dry-screened sand, where they're four bucks a ton higher, then you'd have to hot, figure out what your total budget would allow according to what your usage would be for each project. If that makes any sense.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so usually what a lot of towns will do, like Pompert, for instance, they don't buy dry-screened sand from us, but they buy the three-eighths ledge. So we were pretty competitive on that price. I just don't know what your volumes are for each other. How, how much sugar's out or total?
I think it's, I think it's large enough that Woodstock has their vendors do the mixing, and we get the final product of all three, you know, all three combined. Sounds like Pompert must mix their own.
Yeah, you know, I was told you guys did that also.
Yeah, we mix up, I, I've seen different piles with different materials.
Oh, well, they keep a little of everything up there.
Yeah, but I think Elijah said they mix it, I thought he did, but.
And, yeah, I don't, I don't think the bulk of it, it's, they, they might customize it here and there and use it for different applications, but I think the bulk of the winter sand comes as all three combined, that's, that's my understanding.
Precombined.
Well, I have, I have two questions anyway, one going back to the previous bid before I realized that are these delivered pricing or are these?
We were estimating both delivery and pickup. So the FOV price is you have your truck or you hiring somebody to pick up our cord?
You're right.
Yeah.
And then the delivered price is delivered to your-
Right, but we don't have a delivered, oh, the, okay.
You're talking on the gravel bid?
Yeah.
Yeah, I went, well, I, but I didn't see that on the sand bid, that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, the sand bid was just, you guys just asked for a delivered price for-
Okay.
Sand, manufactured sand and re-flange. And I was, I was told by, again, I don't know how you do it, I'm just giving this territory after we have to kind of coordinate with the road foreman as to when he's getting his natural sand in, so we can also bring in the three-eighths blended, but if you guys are getting them, again, I don't know what the process is. Because we're quite a bit less on the three-eighths one. Delivered.
So I think, Tom, some questions are whether we mix, how much we mix. And then, I mean, the price difference with three-eight crushed stone, you, I think it would be helpful as, as, I'm sorry, I'm bad at names, but Representative from Pike, thank you, said is to find out what percentages, you know, what we use of these materials.
Yep.
Because if, if the bulk of our use is the crushed stone, which it probably isn't, but if it was, then-
It's a very minor part.
Okay, well.
Yeah, and every, every town has a different bucket load ratio. It's usually a two of one. Buckets of natural sand and one bucket of ledge.
So you want to bring this up at the next meeting, or how do you want to do this?
I don't, I, I don't know that much about it, so I'm-
I know we've always done it as a, as a single-
Vendor.
Vendor, yeah.
Elijah said he mixes.
He's what?
Yeah, well, I asked him.
Oh, you did?
Okay.
So then that was minus on-
Does that mean we can do a split?
I think you'd have to find out if, like, Twin State sticks to those prices, if we don't-
If we, right, exactly.
If we split.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll take any piece of the pie, so.
Okay.
He just wants the three-eighths ledge, that's easy enough.
I mean, that's what makes sense financially.
So I don't know how you, how you do it.
There, there's a reason for doing this, because I asked the same question, and I don't understand the reason, so.
So how would you do it, for instance, if I had to put a sand price in and we were, our ratio was the offset of what, like, Twin State's three-eighths ledge, like, our ratio was, you just, then it's just, we wouldn't want to test it.
Uh, no, I think we'd have to do the analysis that Susan's talking about.
Prorated and-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Figure out what the real bottom line is based upon the ratio, eh, it's not that right.
And I mean, screen, I mean, D and D is the lowest dried, dry-screened sand anyway.
Yeah, sure are.
So shall we, I hate to say table one more day.
Do we have time to table it to?
It's not snowing yet.
It's not snowing yet. Yeah, it's not snowing yet.
No, 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 we have time. Get this clarified.
Okay.
Yep.
Good questions.
Thank you for coming, it helps. The explanations were helpful.
That was very helpful, thank you.
All right. Is there any other business? I've got nothing.
No.
I have to scoot in a few, in a minute or two, could we go ahead and quickly go into executive session to discuss the candidates?
All right, so that's going to be-
Can I just?
Yeah.
I was not here for the July nineteenth meet, meeting, which we've had to postpone that vote already because we didn't have forum. So could we vote just on the July nineteenth minutes before Carrie leaves?
I would move to approve those minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion by Carrie, second by Ray to approve the July nineteenth minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
Three in favor, one abstention, one absent. That motion carries. And so Title I, Section three thirteen. Let me look up the sub.
While you look, I'll move that we move to executive session to discuss appointments.
Which is going to be section, so for the record, it's going to be Section three thirteen, Sub three.
Is anybody on? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're back. And would, uh-
I would move that we appoint Charlie Degener and Nancy's, I'm going to- Svenko and Sarah Glasser Tucker to the Historic Preservation Commission for the town.
I'll second it.
Motion by Carrie, second by Ray to appoint the three applicants to the Historic Preservation Commission for the town. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries with four and one absent.
I'm sorry, I have to scoot early.
Thank you very much, see you later.
Thanks. Bye. Bye.
Which leaves the minutes for July twenty-ninth, August ninth, and August sixteenth.
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'd like to amend the August ninth minutes to reflect that when the select board came out of executive session, they agreed to hire Dominic Cloud as our consultant in the town manager's.
Okay, uh, let's see. Oh, that's August ninth.
It was the joint.
Yeah, I just, I was looking at the wrong. I have the nineteenth and then, oh, there it is, yeah.
When we hire him?
Page two.
There we go, okay. So should we reflect on August ninth that we took no action requiring a vote? I mean, I think the complaint from a citizen is that we come out of executive session and there's no record of what happened.
Yeah, I mean, it is in the minutes for the twenty-
No, you're right, I, I-
But what, the only, the other point that he had that, and I don't know what the rule on minutes is, but we have to state the reason to go into executive session?
Right.
And I don't know if that needs to be reflected in the minutes also.
It should. It should be.
So we just need to amend the August ninth minutes to reflect why we went into executive session and if we took any action when we came out.
Did we, but we did go?
Yeah.
Into executive session on the ninth?
We were in for almost an hour.
Yes, okay. But we'd already, at that point, we'd already done-
But it doesn't say why we went into executive session.
Right. Was that when we set the, that was a joint, so that wasn't when we set the-
It is a joint meeting.
It was a joint meeting, but it wasn't the-
But it was, it was, had to do with talking to Dominic about what-
What we were interested in.
What we were looking for and-
Okay, so we need to reflect that no-
Went into the executive session to discuss the town manager search.
Well, it says that in B.
Right.
Right. So if we just say we went into executive session for that reason?
And no action was taken.
Right.
So I guess to summarize, I would say C could add, no action was taken on discussion referenced B one.
Yeah, I'd just say we went into exec, executive session to discuss what we were looking for in the town manager.
Copy and paste?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just say no action was taken when we-
And then for the twenty ninth, we just need to amend to add-
No, we're fine on the-
We're fine on the twenty-ninth?
Yes, it's fine.
For the ninth, do we need to add the title and section that we went into executive session for? I'm inclined to think that if we have to say it in the meeting,
It might be too-
They might need to be in the minutes, so it doesn't-
It doesn't hurt.
It doesn't hurt to add it, so we can add- So we can add those two things there?
Yeah, I can add it. I don't know what it was.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be same thing, Sub 3. I can write it out for you. Yeah, but I'm good with everything else.
So then I'll amend that to accept everything but the 9th until we get those?
Okay.
Sure. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Which leaves us with adjournment. Right, anything else?
Yeah, I wasn't here for the meeting, the last meeting with Dominic. And I'm, has it been announced who the committees are and what the process is? Just again, to have some transparency for the town manager search?
No, because this is our first meeting since then.
Okay, I just think for trans, you know
Yeah, so
we have a complaint from a citizen
Yeah, so for the public record, representing the town, select board on the search committee is going to be Ray Blujewa and Susan Ford, assisted by Tom Devivoi, member of the public.
Village.
Who's it, the village is represented by Seaton McRoy
Gabe DeLeon.
Gabe DeLeon and Citizen Laura Powers.
Powell.
Powell, thank you. So if nothing else, I'm ready to adjourn.
So moved.
Tom?
I'll second it.
Good, all right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.